Clients with in compliance with NJ SA 10 colon 4, the Open Public Meetings Act notices this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
For Monday, September 20th, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell is absent. Mr. Riker? Mr. Jezwicki is absent. Mr. Luise? Ms. Britto is absent. Mr. Wall? Okay, Mr. Fleming? Mr. Riccardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Okay, so first order of business, we have an executive session. I guess we could just close these orders.
Close the door and turn off the thing. But Mr. Chairman, if I may, first, we have to do the motion, which is whereas the Planning Board of Township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. Whereas it is necessary for the Planning Board of Township of Jackson to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters relating to item, an item authorized by NJ SAT 10 colon 4 and designated as current litigation relates to the L at Jackson matter.
Thank you. So we have a motion.
Why?
No, you can't make a motion. Oh, I get a motion for executive session. Mr. Fleming, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Just for members of the public who may be, okay. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Having come out of executive session and having discussed that L litigation, as board is aware, public may be aware, that the L litigation regarding the north and now, north and south sites that also involved fair share housing for the affordable units has been settled. Looking for municipality passed a resolution at its last regular meeting authorizing the adoption of and approval of the settlement and authorizing Mr. McGuckin to sign off on the agreements. With respect, if someone from the board, if so inclined, would make a motion to approve the settlement and authorize my signature to introduce that and submit it to court with a second and a vocal vote, we would be, it would be appreciated.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall? Oh, sorry, Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a number of minutes. First off, the payment for bachelor recording secretary for the evening, September 22nd, 21.
There.
There. Go here a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, we have a number of minutes that have been there. You guys have had time to review. We have minutes from July 26th, special meeting, August 2nd, a regular meeting, August 2nd again for executive meeting, and August 16th again for a regular meeting. So does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns, changes for any of these minutes? Everybody good? Okay, so I would like a motion to approve all these minutes.
Yes, we double check.
Yeah, yes, everybody who is eligible for all.
So again, this is approval of minutes for July 26th, August 2nd, regular meeting, August 2nd, executive meeting, and August 16th, regular meeting. I get a motion.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, engineer, you're finding matters, gentlemen, you have any particular statement? Those are good things. Legal matters, we have two resolutions that have been presented to us at our overall. The first being block 3001 lot 1, which crossing phase 3. Counselor, you want to make a statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that resolution is for approval of a phase 3 of the overall act, which is divided into three phases, 3A, B, and C of the, what's known as the adventure crossing application. This is primarily for the housing element.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. And roll.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, and next up, we have blocks 7403, lots 1 and 2, that was power, realty, and associates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is for approval of a two-story professional office building at the site of the former Timothy Ryan funeral home. Folks know that on, off of Brewers Bridge Road to prove two-story professional offices with no base.
Yeah, I have those. Any discussion?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Riccardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, Denise, any changes? Thank you. All right, let's jump into further community access. That's block 2201, lots 5, 6, 16, Whitesville, this is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application, we started, I believe, on August 2nd, August 2nd. And based on the comments of the, of the board, the applicant requested it carried tonight, the submit revised plans. We have received revised plans and issued a letter dated September 15th. Basically, quickly in summary, the applicants reduced the front building from 14,900 square feet to 11,620 square feet, which reduced a front yard setback variance, but that variance still is in play. We're 100 feet is required. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 100 feet is required and 66.3 feet is, is proposed. They, was it, the revisions did allow for some enlarging some buffers, adding some additional landscaping. There's a proposal now to rebuild the front building adjacent to Whitesville Road. Architecturals have been submitted for that. It's proposed to keep the existing building. So definitely some testimony from the applicant as far as the architectural treatments that are proposed. He has submitted some before and after, I'll call them quoted simulations, but I think we need some detail as far as what this new, this new or the existing building is going, going to look like. The only other question I would have, it's, there was a wetlands buffer that's called out or noted in the pylon certificate applying, and it appears that there's some encroachments into that, into that buffer line. So some testimony from the applicant as far as that issue goes. Anything else, yeah, can address them as we go on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office also has a second review letter dated September 16th. Without repeating Doug's issues or comments, we did note that there are still variances in play. We'd ask Graham just to touch on them for the record, the front yard setback, the side yard setback, the parking area setback, and the buffer requirement. There is an issue that did not get much attention at the last meeting, and that had to do with the outdoor storage of materials on the site. It's obvious from revised plans that there are stone areas that are stoned areas, which may or may not have received site plan approval from any board that are used for parking areas. They're also used for the outdoor storage of material. Now, in the PM1 zone, the only type of outdoor storage is what's referred to as incidental out, storage out of doors. And the board may need to spend some time making a determination. If someone comes in and puts stacks of wood or trailers or construction equipment, is that incidental to the permitted use? We have not seen a statement of operations, it says, for each of the tenants, I don't remember the number of tenants off the top of my head, each of them utilizes these stoned, unregulated, unpaved areas to do X, Y, and Z. And the reason I bring this up is this is a post-approval issue for the municipality. The zoning officer has nothing to go by except a set of plans and the resolution that we prepare. And so if you visited the site, there's outdoor storage of materials. There's parking of construction vehicles and trailers in areas that are not demarcated by pavement or striping. There is in some form, some construction equipment on the site. There are unregistered and unlicensed vehicles on the site. So to that end, unfortunately, this may be a jurisdictional issue. Okay, the incidental storage out of doors is, we'd wait to hear from the applicant for their testimony, and the board would need to determine what they perceive incidental is. It's something that's necessary to bring inside the building, but without a complete statement of operations, it says tenant 2 does this, they do it here, and that's their area, and they're responsible for it. We sort of have this mishmash of areas that I'm not sure have any approvals, it just seemed to have grown over time, that are stoned, and we're parking construction equipment on them. So I'd asked the applicant at some point during their testimony to revisit the statement of operations, what exists and what is proposed on the site, and the issue of outdoor storage. Thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jan Woders. I'm a partner in the firm of Bathgate, Wegener, Wolf, and Lakewood. I represent the applicant. And as was noted, we were here a month ago and made a presentation, and as a result of comments, the professionals and from the board members, we have, the applicant has revised the plans and submitted revisions, both addressing some of the building size issues, the buffering issues, and other issues that were raised. And so at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Graham McFarland from PDS Professional Design Services to describe what changes have been proposed.
So Mr. Woders, first, we generally, we introduce, but I also want to just make sure the record is clear. Mr. Wall, is he, and this may have been announced already, so I apologize if I'm repeating that to anybody. Mr. Wall is here, he's been here for the recitation, and he is ready, he's ready to rock and roll. His sleeves are up. Mr. McFarland, if you raise your right hand, do you some swear or affirm that the testimony information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you've been previously qualified as both an engineer and planner?
I have.
Just also through the chair, Mr. Woders, I do not want to mess with your presentation, but please let's not forget to address Mr. Peters' really planning discussion about how to relate those stone storage areas to the ordinance.
Yes, we will, we will try to address that.
Thank you.
Um, yes, Anthony, if you could put A8 on the screen for us? So on, on the screen tonight, you can see, this is the revised site plan, exhibit A8. This shows the, the two buildings that are proposed, the building up front, building number one, the larger building, building number two, in the back of the site. It also shows our proposal now to demolish and rebuild part of the existing building that's located on the site. I, I believe the board will recall that there was a lot of discussion about the geometry and the driveway access to, to, around building A1. That has, that has been revised based upon input from the board. The building has been reduced in size a little bit, and there was a second, you know, second driveway movement in here that has been eliminated. That has allowed the buffer to be increased. We're still requesting that variance from ordinance requirement, but the buffer has been increased significantly from what was originally proposed. And we might as well jump, jump right into what Ernie was, was talking about. You can see on this site plan where I'm highlighting with the pointer, this area right in here is designated as an outdoor storage area. Your ordinance does anticipate this condition, and it does allow for what it terms incidental storage for the uses that are taking place on the site. Our position is that that area of the site would be identified for outdoor storage, not for processing, manufacturing, assembly of any material or products, simply for outside storage that may be necessary for the types of tenants that we anticipate having in these types of multi-tenant buildings. I don't believe that our client can, can identify a specific portion of outdoor storage, you know, to a specific tenant. As these are multi-tenant spaces, those uses could fluctuate over time based upon market conditions, based upon the economy, based upon a lot of different factors. So I think it would be very difficult and frankly unfair to try to designate a specific portion to a specific tenant at this time. I believe that's best left to the management of the property by the owner as the property is, is used throughout its entire lifetime. Now, Mr. Peters also pointed out a couple of specific things, things such as unregistered or, you know, possibly junk vehicles. They should not be stored on site, and we're not, you know, we're, we're gonna make sure that doesn't continue, and certainly the resolution should, should clearly, should clearly indicate that. I would anticipate that if it's a, if it's a wooden manufacturing company, a, you know, railing company or a stair company, there would be lumber stored outside. If it's a, you know, a kitchen, kitchen cabinet company, they would have other products and materials that may be stored outside. So it would be, it would be limited to, and of course, proper language be developed, but our, our representation is it would be limited to, to of course, just the uses that are occurring by any of the tenants in the building, and of course, managed, managed by the property. As to the, as to the overall site plan, just, just, just briefly run through a little more, little more detail exactly what we did.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, why don't we just address that because at some level, that was a lot of the recitation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully, I understand Mr. McFarland's testimony. He didn't describe what incidental is. Okay, incidental is something you bring inside. This is a new site plan application. If you need to have lumber on site, build the site so you can put the lumber inside. You're not, you're not allowed to have outdoor storage materials in this cell. Can't designate the outdoor storage? It's a new site plan. Of course you can. You designate where parking and drive aisles are. You can designate where the new entrances is. You can designate where buildings are. You sure as hell can designate where the outdoor storage of materials are, assuming that they're permitted, because they're only allowed if they're incidental. So while I understand Mr. McFarland giving his initial testimony, I think you need a statement operations that says so-and-so uses this area. I don't know how you expect the code enforcement officer to reconcile that with that testimony. It's on the plan. So any place that there's stone, which, by the way, we still haven't heard, if it's approved, if they have any permits for it, if it was ever site planned approved or approved from the NJDEP or anyone else that would have had to have done that. But just saying that it's unfair, show us that it's legal first. And then let's decide whether or not each of the six tenants get whatever square footage is. I, I don't even know how big the area is. But there's gotta be, you know, if, if I own a business and Doug owns a business, maybe he doesn't want his outdoor storage materials with my outdoor storage materials. Maybe there need to be ballards or fencing or something, but just the, we don't like it, we think it's unfair. Maybe I spent two more minutes on this.
Yeah, the missing component, as evidenced by some of these photographs, you got us a supply of the floor. Here you have outdoor storage, five gallon ones. We have no idea what's in those, five gallon ones being stored outside. I didn't know this. Talking about why outdoor storage is going to be 55 gallon ones? What's in these? This scares me.
Understood. And the, 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 the fire marshal and the code official certainly have jurisdiction to make inspections for issues such as that. Let me just take a step back and say where, what I was trying to, trying to decipher and trying to represent, as I look at building number, building number two, which has whatever it is, seven or, seven or eight tenant spaces. Now, right now, let's just assume all those tenant spaces are occupied by, you know, seven different tenants. Only one or two of those possibly may have some need for outdoor storage. The other four or five may have no need for outdoor storage. So all I'm trying to say is that who may specifically be using or who may be specifically using what portion of the outside storage. There's no way that I, that we can really restrict that right now, other than to say the outdoor storage can be utilized by any, any of the tenants, and let the property owner, owner decide who gets what, how much square footage of that outdoor storage.
But respectfully, Graham, how, how do I put it in a resolution so that the gravel area doesn't grow or we don't start having issues between tenants because, you know, Macy's thinks Gimbel's is on their side of the outdoor unregulated storage area?
Well, the issue between the tenants is not your issue, that's an issue for the property owner. With, with, you know, with, with due respect, I think.
With due respect, you don't, you don't answer the phone in Jackson Township. They call the zoning office first.
And the zoning officer can refer back to the owner, because that's not a zoning issue, in my opinion. In my, in my opinion, that's not, that's not a zoning issue. The zoning issue would be, is there outdoor storage?
No, it's a code enforcement issue.
Oh, correct.
Code enforcement issue, but in a resolution so we can enforce it.
I, I.
Otherwise, I get what I get out there, which is you've got the landscaper who's like in the third unit, he's got stuff all the way in the back of the site. His tractor trailer is everywhere. His tractor trailer is in the front yard. There's, there's a hodgepodge of, of things out here. Someone tell us what you're gonna do. Someone tell us what you're gonna get rid of or bring into conformance. And then maybe we can talk about, well, you know, these areas are, are based upon what the market will bear, and if someone comes in and uses all of it, none of the other tenants can have any of it. I understand that. That's like we do with warehouse contractor yards and available parking. A dance studio comes in and takes it up, they take care of all the parking, you can't rent the space out. But at this point, I have a real concern that you or your clients expecting us to approve what's out there without fixing some of the things that aren't proper.
I think that what is, what is not, needs to be defined with all the rules, but barrels and all that. I mean, there could be, could have a danger of renting out one of these spaces and acetone and whatever.
Just, just speaking to my client. The barrels, the pictures you saw have been, were before and after pictures. The barrels, according to my client, had been removed, and there is no tenant that I'm aware of or you, use of the property that requires the outdoor storage of barrels. So that would be something, but I agree with.
Mr. Chairman? I just want to jump in. Can we go back to this, you know, this wetland buffer area and that parking and some of the stores that we're talking about is in it? I'm still kind of unclear as you're showing me a buffer, I have a pylon certificate that says you're okay, except for no encroachments, but I'm seeing encroachments in, in there. And just as far as the issue of outdoor storage, I think it's important we nail down exactly what it is, but I don't see why there isn't any reason we can't demarcate on the, on the property itself with that. In this area, this is the area you can have the outdoor storage, and then figure out what that outdoor storage is. But as it stands now, it would be.
Well, no, we, we, we agree with that. Yeah, the plan does show a fence enclosing that outdoor storage area that certainly has to be, has to be maintained, possibly, you know, fixed as, as necessary. What I was trying to just, just discuss was that there may be some fluidity as to which tenants may need that outdoor storage.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, and I apologize, I can't remember at this point if it was in front of this board, in front of the zoning board. We've had similar issues in the past where the larger space is demarked by a fence. And then internally, as Mr. Peters indicated, as the fluidity of the tenants occurs, the app, the owner, the property owner is required to, with the use of ballards or other relevant materials, jersey barriers, whatever, to separate each tenant. So I think if that can be articulated, if it's acceptable to the board, obviously, and the applicant, in a resolution. But the next step, because you're in front of the planning board here, the, the more or as important issue is, I think the board needs to hear, not to be worked out, what exactly is incidental storage? Where you were talking about outdoor storage, and that adjective, respectfully in my mind, and interpret, and with regard to the ordinance, is what's important. So I'll just cheat, doing it on the fly a little bit, but, so I looked up incidental, the Oxford Dictionary is, means that it's, it's something that is accompanying, but not a, but not a major part of. And respectfully, I would argue that the basis of the ordinance, and I would defer to our planner and engineer, if the, the governing body's choice of the term incidental means that it's not supposed to be an active storage spot. It's, it's supposed to be incidental, almost for spillover type of, type of uses. It's not supposed to be permanent outdoor storage. I see the applicant himself shaking his head, yes, so that's good. So then it will potentially be up to the attorneys to articulate that meaning in, in resolution. I, I just, I don't, do you, do you gentlemen disagree, and certainly the board? It's, am I hitting a good accord on it?
I think that's an accurate assessment.
Yeah, Mr. Woders, I, I like your explanation.
I would tend to agree with a short leash. Incidental means to me, okay, you've got a load of lumber coming in, it's gonna be there for a day or two until you can break it down and get it into the facility. Incidental not to me is long-term storage, and as long as I've driven past that building, I've seen drafts of material out there. So I, I disagree that it, it's gonna be continued storage outside. Incidental to me means while you're offloading it, while you're parsing it out or whatever, and it's not to be out there permanently. And I will go a little bit further that, I gotta tell you, as the environmental commissioner, seeing these photos, I'm absolutely disgusted. It shows to me that it's 40 years of negligence. You'll tell us what was in the barrels and where you put them, because people put barrels out for a reason, because they don't want to deal with it. You, you finally cut the overgrowth back so you could deal with the other problems, and you find the barrels. I will remind you, you're in the pylon zone. You're into the, the buffer, you're into it, and you're on it without permission. No one's called you to the carpet except us. And then there's barrels. The other day, I drove maybe a third of the way, and I turned around, I'm like, you've gotta be kidding me. This isn't a five-year problem. This isn't a, a five-year problem, it isn't a ten-year problem. This has been going on for decades. It's disgusting.
Mr. Chairman, you were, we cut you off. Mr. Ward, I'm sorry.
Agreeing with Mr. Gerlinger in his overall- Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what incidental means either, but the concept is, and I think what we're talking about would be to delineate an area associated with the building that would be specifically for storage of incidental product, however that is defined. And since these are multi-tenanted buildings, the, the utilization of that designated space is going to vary at times between the tenants, as tenants come and go. And so we have no problems with designated, designating a major area with interior movable areas per the, per the, the tenant's requirements. We're just, we wanna, probably need to hone in a little bit more on exactly what is incidental.
So, one through the chairman, again, one idea I pose, board can obviously weigh in as well, is listening to Mr. Riker, is there, could there be a temporal component to the, to the incidental storage? And what I'm searching for is, based on my respectful, you know, my experience at least, when things lay out for a long period of time, that's when things get to be a mess. So if there's a temporal requirement for turnover of this incidental storage, in general, the hope would be, it would be less likely to, and I'm using the term very broadly and not legally, it's, it wouldn't turn into junk, because there would be pressure, you know, uh, you know, if a load comes in or something, and it's incidental to what that contractor needs, you know, the contractor, a, and ultimately the property owner have to be, um, you know, have to be on top of their game, so that stuff is not sitting out there for more than, and I'm throwing it out thirty days. I'm not into business, thirty days may be too short, maybe too long, I don't know. But again, trying, and maybe, um, at some point, uh, again, through the chairman, Mr. Ward, should we take a break, just as your client, because he knows what's been out there, how, how long the timeframe is. But the temporal requirement from a, from a code enforcement issue could assist code enforcement, because if theoretically, if a delivery comes, there's a, you know, there's a record of when the delivery was received, if somebody gets a complaint, the, uh, code enforcement officer goes out there, wants to see when XYZ was delivered, that it was delivered on such and such a date, and it's inside of thirty days, no issue, just make sure it's gone by, whatever. If it's delivered, and it's beyond the timeframe everyone agrees to, then, you know, you get your, the process gets started.
Yeah.
And I put that idea on the table, so that no one is surprised when memorialization, should the board act appropriate, uh, act to approve, um, no one's surprised with the language in the resolution.
Yeah, I, and, and I appreciate that, Mr. Gerlinger. I think, um, the definition of incidental, while I'm still not sure about that, would of necessity include some time requirement? So that, I, I think the concept is one that is workable, and I just don't know the details of that yet. Something, have to confer a little bit more with the client, and along with some of the multi-tenants in the, the building as to their utilization, so. Because we're, we're talking about now, for just the existing building, not the other buildings, just the, correct? Outdoor storage on the existing building only? No? Okay, for any builder?
No, I, I believe, um, we'd like the flexibility to have the outdoor storage utilized by potentially any tenant.
Yeah, I, I would think the last thing we'd like to see is abandoned trailers with weeds growing up around them, um, something sitting out there, like crumbs rusting away, possibly leaking, piles of stones that somebody drops off out of their dump truck, and they sit there forever. I mean, things like that is what we wanna prevent from happening out there. It becomes unsightly. Spend a lot of time trying to beautify the area, some of the architectural drawings are outstanding. It wouldn't be in place with those architectural drawings, if you allowed that to happen.
Mr. Chairman? You know, and at, at one point, these outdoor storage areas, can we agreement that, getting into agreement or stipulation that they will be fenced?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta tell you, I, um, the way that this property has been maintained over the last few decades, I don't have confidence that it's going to be maintained any better. I, I, I look here at, you know, before and after photos, I see here a rendering, it's beautiful, okay? And I see an after photograph, and that's certainly, they certainly don't look the same. I don't, um, I don't see.
Well, one photo that you see as, as an effort, I think you've quite a bit of an attempt-
To do a short-term cleanup to make the buildings more presentable. Obviously, this is not gonna be done, and that building is not gonna be changed architecturally.
Are you telling me that it's gonna look like that when it's done?
Yes. Yes.
Putting that on record?
Right. As, as to the phase when that gets done, that's a, that's an issue, uh, but ultimately, that's what that building is gonna look like.
Yes. Well, may, maybe, um, we can, we can flip through the, um, the renderings, and show the board what is proposed. So Anthony, if you can go to A nine. A nine is a rendering of building one. So the building is located, the new building, uh, proposed at the frontage of, of White sville Road. This is basically looking from Whitesville Road into the site, where we have, uh, you know, there's some landscape, landscaping in front, and it shows the, the, you know, the scale of the building, the types of materials, uh, the colors that are anticipated to be used at this time. Go to A ten, please. A ten is the, is a larger building in the back, the, uh, the, the main warehouse building. So that's building number two. Uh, you can see, it shows the loading docks on the side of the building, and then shows the, uh, the tenant spaces that would be located along the, uh, the main access, main access of the building. Uh, A, A eleven now, please. A eleven is, uh, is, is building three, which is the, the existing building to be demolished and rebuilt. Uh, this is a view, again, showing the, showing the tenant spaces, um, along the front of the building, again, showing the scale and potential colors and, and materials that would be utilized. And then Anthony, A twelve. A twelve is also building A three, which is where the existing building is, shows the bump out that, that would be in the front part of the building, and then shows the rest of the building, uh, where the, the existing building would be demolished and rebuilt. So again, resulting in three new buildings on site, uh, that would certainly improve the appearance of the property, um, in, in, in total. Of course, we, we did listen to the board's input last month when we were here and developing these plans. Hopefully, the board recalls that originally my client, he was not proposing this, this demo and rebuild of, uh, of, of building three. He was trying to keep that building the way it was. Its condition certainly needs, uh, a lot of, a lot of TLC. He has, uh, tried to undertake some of the input from the board and started to make some of those repairs. That's why he submitted those, uh, those before and after pictures. He just wanted to show that he is trying to make some progress, and, uh, you know, listen to what the board had to offer. He does have a long-term plan here to totally upgrade and redevelop this property, and make it into a, a first-class business park. Uh, it certainly has not been maintained, maybe to, uh, to, to full satisfaction over, over the past, past few years. Um, he's also in a progress of taking down the, uh, the big dust collection equipment that's located in that, you know, kinda courtyard area between, uh, between the two wings of the building, so that work is underway as well. So he is already undertaking, uh, a significant investment to upgrade the property, and looks forward, forward to, to redeveloping this property into a first-class business park.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, just broadly speaking, um, this is really for edification, Mr. McFarlane knows this. You know, the board has taken it upon itself, so your client understands, I saw that he walked out, and I want the record to reflect that. But, so your client understands that, and it's part of the record. It's been this board's position, the last couple of years at this point specifically, to particularly on the corridor roads, the ma, major county roads, that the presentation to the public be cleaned up. And it's very important in general for the board. Chairman has used in the past the concept of gateway projects and stuff. This may not reach that level per se, but it certainly is presentation over a major corridor road, Whitesville Road, and that's the goal of the board, to ensure that that occurs, uh, moving forward.
That's right. This is pretty far, in this budget, I know that, well, it, right. I think my concern is, despite, your willingness to do, your willingness to be, I pray, your willingness to go the effort to make this to the, out of front door. That's great. I don't see a lot of problems, you find, uh, and have to, yeah, I have to, that, you know, this is a project, you're in the role, this is a, that's a lot of, he's done a lot of work, for him to get it, um, just, just, sure, uh, the access, the, all that, that is, come, right, abandoned, all that's gotta go, and I think that's where the focus needs to be seriously. This part, I think, you're getting it, arguing over a little bit of what the definition is of defining a incidental storage. I get that. But I think that you're, you're, kind of fixed with what you're actually, second thing is, I don't know, gentlemen, or, I don't know if we can outside storage, I think, and I'm sure it's, don't wanna start a present, but that is, no, no problem.
It, it makes it difficult, if the, if outdoor storage isn't permitted, then making up permitted outdoor storages isn't this board's jurisdiction.
I think the government, that's all that's the base, we can take care of it. But again, it's a government, how much tax, what should you store? Then I end up dropping it off. I don't see a, this, the new board, maybe it's not so.
Mr. McFarlane, I told you saying that one of the buildings is going to be demolished and be built, but I'm here at the plans, and I'm, I'm unclear which building you're referring to. I see, um, you know, existing buildings remain, existing buildings remain, and then darker shaded ones, new construction, which one is being knocked down and rebuilt?
Well, if you refer to, um, sheet two of the plan set, sheet two is a demolition Right? And the demolition plan, you can see that the existing building is, um, is shaded, and there are two wings. I, I would've called them wings if I drew it personally, but there are, there are two wings to the building on the left side that are going to remain, and then the rest of that building is to be demolished, and then replaced with the new construction, which is then shown on, you know, the site plan. The next sheet shows, shows the proposed footprint. So ba, basically, um, you know, the area, again, back to that demolition plan, the area between those two wings is occupied by that dust collection equipment right now that's no longer in use, which the client is already, you know, taking, taking down. So he's proposing to demolish those, that front, I'll call it that front part, basically the front, two-thirds of that existing building. Demolish that, you know, rebuild with, with new construction.
So then, this building that I'm working at, this rent, is not one of you, this-
Uh, which, which one is that? Just make sure we're on the same page.
It's not more.
Well, they're, they're, they're all marked. Well, maybe small on, on there.
So this is new construction, this floor, not what the, transforming the system?
Oh, correct. Correct.
So then these after photographs, with the exception of, um, the dust collection's being moved, that is what it is?
The after shows some of the work that's in progress now, where my client, after the last meeting, he undertook to start cleaning up the site, and start cleaning up the building, and painting the existing building, to try to make it look at least a little more presentable than it does today. So he, so the before and after, or before was, let's say, a month ago, after is, he cleaned up, he did some painting, he did, you know, some refurbishing of the building to make it more presentable. So he's, he's started to try to make some of the improvements, to make the property look a little nicer, based upon some input he got from the board last month. Well, tho, those activities already occur there. This plan, I mean, this prior, prior, uh, prior revision was, uh, what was submitted to the pineslands for issuance of the certificate of file. So the pineslands did see that, and they did approve the certificate of file.
Um, the pines, um, certificate filing did, did mention that to, to forty, that that was one of the requirements that that, um, um, adhered to. And I'm, I'm still having, struggling with, I'm seeing that storage, I'm seeing pavement, I'm seeing curbing, um, it's in this buffer.
Agreed, but all I can tell you is this, that plan was presented to the pineslands, and that's what they issued the certificate filing upon. Now granted, we do have to go back to the pineslands after we get municipal, you know, local approval for a letter of no call-up, and if they point something out at that time, it'd have to be a draft. But as, as of right now, uh, the plan was presented with that driveway proposed there, and that's what the certificate of filing was based upon. And they did not provide, they did not tell us, um, anything, um, you know, was not satisfactory.
Certificate of filing is one of the conditions, um, all development, including clearing and land disturbance shall be located at least two hundred and forty feet from the
That's, that's- The language in your certificate of filing, but again, again, they've issued a certificate of filing, and after, hopefully after a local approval, we go back to the pineslands for a letter of no call-up, and see what their final decision is.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the only other question, and I'm just kinda noticing now, I'm seeing, uh, I guess the phase two building, one-story warehouse, um, and the other ones are contractors' warehouse. But I'm not seeing any office in any of the architecturals. So is this all just warehousing? So is this all just warehousing, or is it contractor warehouse?
Well, they're multi-tenant spaces. I, I believe that, and Barry, maybe correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, we did, did speak about this. I believe that there will be a small office component associated with the warehouse spaces. I know that the, the architectural plans do not show those office components right now. It is typical that, uh, in multi-tenant spaces like this, there are, there are small office components, and that's something that we have to get finalized and clarified.
You're, you're, I'd say significantly over in parking, but that analysis of what the office spaces in, in the warehouses, as small as it might be, isn't accounted for, um, in the whole parking calculation, except for, I think, 445 square feet of office that you've.
Correct. The, the tabulation right now is based upon a warehouse at one per 1,500. Office would be one per 200, uh, so that would allow us, you know, 47 parking spaces attributed to office space, but whatever 47 by 200 is, we could accommodate and still satisfy the parking demand, as long as all the other math is correct.
Can we, um, solidify or, you know, specify the office space that's devoted to the, the individual units?
Yes, the, the board should certainly have that information, and that's something we'll provide through, hopefully through compliance.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm looking at the photos, um, the 55-gallon drums and the other generated trash, I guess for lack of a better word. Where were they disposed of now?
Right, actually, my client just asked, the applicant would like to speak to the board to respond to the question on the drums and also as to the condition of the building and efforts that he's making to clean up the site, so Barry.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the applicant?
My name is Barry Rosenblum, R-O-S-E-N-B-L-U-M, and I'm the owner of the property with my family, my wife and my kids, Whiteville Business Park. With all due respect, I'm sitting there listening to everybody, and you're 100% correct. The building's been there for a long time. I grew up there as a little kid. It was my dad's, one of my dad's properties. It was our, actually our smallest plant. We had plants all over the country. It's a very large company that went out of business. At the time, the building was vacant, and I had buildings in Indiana, Arizona, Atlanta, Maryland. I can name another 10 states that we had buildings in, and I alone, after my dad died, had to take care of these buildings. And I would go out and take care of them where the kids were breaking in and, and graffiti them, and it was very difficult time for me, of course, to see the family business go to, go to hell, excuse the language. I did the best I could. I liquidated what I could to, to help us survive. It was just me and my mother. I lost my brother and I lost my father. Anyway, the Jackson Building is closest to where I live and at home, and I did the best I could. I had tenants in there for, as soon as I could, I cut it up. We cut it up together with the town. Everything was done with permits and the building department. We cut it all up and we had multiple tenants. Slowly, I filled it up, so I didn't lose it. I had tenants there, I still have tenants there, that haven't raised their rents in 20 years because their families, they can't, I have tenants that owe me years' worth of rent. That's no excuse for the property, though. There was a lot of tenants that left and they left their junk behind. I did the best I could. Since the last meeting, the pictures that you were looking at, the drums were empty. I know how to handle environmental because I did it all over the country. And I had to do, I spent millions of dollars to clean things and make sure they were disposed of properly, because whether you know it or not, you could, this, a company can dispose of something for you and three years later, they'll come and, from another state where they dumped it, and you're in trouble. But I'm, I, I got it, I got it. The, the drums, the few drums that were there were empty, and in the past month alone, I cleaned out unregistered vehicles. There's no registers, a few left, they're gone. My tenants were told, you get them out of here, you have a week, and they've been struggling, but I've been helping them. I brought in equipment, I got prices to take down that old dust collector. We still use, one tenant still uses about maybe 10% of it. There's one, one of the back hoppers that is gonna stay. It's, they painted it the other day. I told them they had three days to paint. I wanted to paint before this meeting, and they did it. I brought them lifts, those high lift things and, oh. Anyway, I did a lot there. My, myself, I lost nine pounds since the last meeting, it was the best workout I ever had. I went and got a pressure washer. I pressure washed that building myself. I did the old side. I did the front side. I, I brought a high lift in there. I sprayed it. Mouth's full of paint. I did the, you know, until today, and we're not stopping. My goal, I got four kids, and this is for them. And I'm not, we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm taking, I'm undertaking a project here that's gonna cost a fortune and put my family on the line, but I'm, I'm gonna do this. I want this place to be the nicest place in Jackson. Listen, it's not a shopping center, but it's gonna be pretty. They're building offices next door. This side of the building, I just did a gray paint real quick, because this is the side, the existing side. This building's gonna get fixed up, but I gotta do it last, because if we're gonna be bringing in, building these new buildings, there's gonna be construction equipment coming in, trucks coming in, there's gonna be a little sand blowing, things like that. But my goal is to fix it, and I don't know, you didn't, if you saw the picture of what, what the engineer, my engineers and my architects, the front part of the building that we're gonna take away, actually, I call this side the chicken coop, because that's what it was. When my dad bought this property, it was a chicken coop. He raised it. It's all enforced with heavy-duty steel inside beams so that that dust collectors can sit on top. The dust collectors aren't needed anymore. We're taking them down. We, we just took out all the surrounding steel around it so that we can get in with the the lull or whatever, you know, the forklift thing that goes up to, and we, we ready, went and we're gonna cut it down. It's light stuff. It's light material. They're, they're hollow. They're gonna come down, I would say, I would say within the next 60 days, they're coming down. There's dumpsters there, there's, I mean, it doesn't look, but soon you'll see how much we took down. That being said, I'm listening to everybody talk about decades and decades and decades. I'm here to talk about tomorrow. Tomorrow is what we need to do here to fix this place up and to make it viable. I need to have the tenant spaces wide, so I can have rental income to pay for it. You know, I'm gonna undertake tremendous amount of debt, which is gonna end up my kids' debt, not mine. And I hope, you know, hopefully, the economy will stay strong and will, you know, this area, I know the owners of the offices next door, they're kicking themselves in the back because they wish they were, they built light industrial, or you wanna call it, or warehouse spaces or contractor spaces, because that's what's needed around here. It's, there's no space. Office space, good luck. You know, I wish them the best. But to address what I, I, I just, I just, I couldn't, can't listen to yesterday. I, I can't listen to that anymore. This is for tomorrow. We're gonna do this, the, I'm putting a lot of money, I've already put hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars before I even know where I'm going. But I know we're gonna do this, and this building, which I call the chicken coop, the way we, I had my engineers look at it, we're gonna, technically, really in layman's terms, we're gonna take that roof off. We're gonna build a metal building above, you know, I like metal buildings that have concrete a little bit so that people don't hit them and it's there. We could, structurally, it's fine. We could use most of that wall. And we're gonna go up, and that's my plan, and go over and connect it to the front building. What you were looking at before was the other side of the existing building that we're gonna make it with doors and glass doors and, and tenant spaces are gonna go straight back instead of that way, is the plan. As far as, um, I don't like the outside mess, okay, but there is a few places that, like, give me an example, the stair company. They rent about 7,000 square feet. He's dying. He needs 25,000. He's gonna rent, he wants to rent in the new, he's, he made me promise him that he can have first shot at space. I'm not worried about renting out, because I, I, I could rent it out very quickly. But there's, there's a need for certain types of businesses. This was a mill. This was a, a mill for XL Wood Products at one time. We made 8,000 kitchen cabinets a day. 4,000 employees worked that my parents put to work, and they came here with nothing. And they started with nothing. They started here with a chicken coop. It was really, you wanted, it was bad. It was no roofs, and that's what they built up, and it served, there was 300 people working there at one time in one business, one tenant, one, one company. And unfortunately, it closed and I had to cut it up to do what I could, and, and that's what we did, and, and it's very personal for me, the property, because my dad built it by hand, you know, and, uh, added on, and I wanna beautify the place. I'm gonna clean it up. I know you, you mentioned that you don't have faith. That was yesterday, all right? I, I am, I, from the bottom of my heart, I'm really maybe too nice to people over there. The, and, but you should see, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, they don't like me right now. They don't like me right now, and they, and the biggest reason, and I'm blaming it on you guys, because I said, hey, this can't happen. I'm not gonna be able to beautify this place and they're not gonna let me do anything if you don't straighten up here. So that's what we're doing. There's some, a couple more trailers there. I think, just to give you an example, I have a moving company as a tenant, so he has five trailers there. He brought in three trailers from Thompson Moving Company in Lakewood, who just a few months ago went out of business. So they've, guy brought them over there for, and Henry's gonna use them. I said, Henry, you gotta get rid of them. I don't want them. They're not registered now. And he is. He's get, he got rid of one already. He's getting rid of the other two. I don't know if you know him. He's just the hardest-working guy. I, he owes me about 14 months' rent. But I, you know, what am I gonna do? I, he's just worked so hard, I can't throw him out. So everybody there, every tenant of mine, if you even go there and ask them, what's going on with the landlord? They're gonna say, oh, he's in, he's, he's on a roll. And I am, I am. I'm cleaning up. The landscaping tenant, just to address incidentals, in my opinion. The landscaping tenant, they're the cleanest tenant I've had ever. They keep their place spotless, but they do have a lot of trailers that every morning leave and go beautify all the developments in Jackson and Lakewood, whatever. They're a huge company. They're all over the place. And they're clean. They're very clean. You gotta see, I, it's amazing, and they, but yes, they park. You come there after eight o'clock, there's nothing there. There's maybe two. You come there at, at five o'clock, there's probably 20. But they're clean. They, they, they keep everything perfect. They, they even go around my building. They cut my grass. They do my weeds, and not because they have to. I just asked them to do me a favor and, and Walt, the manager there, has been doing it for me. Especially now, he knows that we need to straighten up. The biggest thing, uh, and I'll let you, I'll go back to your meeting, to our meeting. The older building, there's just, I painted the front, that, that's gonna stay. I painted the side of the building for now. We're gonna make it nicer, you know, whether we stuck away or we'll figure something out to make it a little nicer, once we can do the metal. But that's after the other buildings are built. The, uh, the front side that you saw that we're gonna change, it's, it's, uh, half of it's painted, not too bad. The other half has never been painted. It's just raw block. Not, no, that, that's, that's painted now. Other side, I don't know what, what numbers or... Well, that's, that's when we were working, okay. This was in the last couple of weeks. But the other side of the building, where you, where the lumber is, and maybe you saw where the lumber is, and I'll get to that for one second after, but the other, not, not that side, all the way to the other building. I'm not gonna paint it now because they're gonna be running up and down. They're gonna tear up. They gotta run, um, water, the utilities, the electric. It's all gonna be underground. And so I'm, I did what I could that you see from the road. At least we cleaned it up. You know, once you pull inside, the facade on the existing building isn't prettiest, but it's clean. The lumber, I just wanted to mention that, and then I'll, I'll, I'll sit down. There's a little lumber shortage out there, maybe you don't know, okay, and the prices are unbelievable. All right, we've had price increases four times already just this year, where maybe you got one in two years. But the stair guy purchased extra, extra lumber because of that, and he's using it. Now, what you mentioned about how long stuff should sit out there, I agree 100%. I'm with you on that. I don't want junk sitting out there. You know, we can come up with, you know, if something's there in 90 days that they need to turn the inventory, but like the lumber guy, he's gonna put the lumber, we can make him a designated spot. I'm good with that, you know? I want that. We can make a, that the fenced-in area, even when I go in to get a, a new tenant, let's say, approved. They're gonna get approved so that the town knows, or the, the code officer, or, that they know that that's their space. And if it's, you know, the fire, the fire inspectors, I got a great relationship with them because they inspect each tenant, and if a tenant doesn't do what they write, they email me. And in 24 hours, it's taken care of. You can ask them, you know, they, they, I just spoke to them the other day. For years, that's how I do it with them. But as far as the, the, I guess, the code enforcers, I'd like to have that relationship with them, too. I'm not there all the time. I'm traveling everywhere. I'm, I'm, but I want this place to be done right. It's just to limit certain things, I think is not feasible with the changing economies. I don't know, you know? Hey, maybe somebody will come and wanna rent the whole place. One tenant, like my father.
Done. Sir, I, I appreciate you coming forward and speaking about history of the problem and what your vision is for the problem. We all wish you this.
Thank you.
It seems like you really wanted to do right. Circumstances, you haven't been able to. I'm with you.
I appreciate everyone's time, and I think if you give us the opportunity within fair for both, for both the ways, you're gonna be happy at the end.
Well, that's.
That's our goal.
That was my next point, is that, you know, you need to make this board proud that we approved such a project. And, and it came to all fruition, and, you know, is an asset to this community and pays that.
And just to last, just one last thing, the stone or areas that you're talking about, there used to be 300 cars parking in there, 300, and they, that was all parking area. So now there, people are parking their trailers, and the, the lumber storage is actually there, but it's not like I cleared any land, so it's doing anything. Everything was clear. So I don't think I did anything wrong, but intentionally at least, but, uh, I need, listen, I need you guys' help to tell me, and we got inspectors, inspectors, I, I talk to them, I, they, I need them. I need them. I tell them every day, time I see them, you're my eyes. You, I don't know anything about electric or plumbing or that. So anyways, let me, let's, let, let you go. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanna, just wanna make it clear that, you know, the applicant, again, you can take him for his word. He's under oath. He's gonna try his best, but at the end of the day, the planning board particularly is governed by particular municipal ordinances, which makes it, to some level, very direct and very clear. And I just wanna point, it's subsection E, number six, regarding the outdoor space, and taking. And taking the applicant at his word, that today is the first day of the rest of his life trying to clean the thing up, he's then therefore governed by the existing ordinance, which says, "All activities or processes shall take place within a completely enclosed area," period. In the same paragraph, it says, "Incidental storage outdoors shall," not maybe with a fence, or maybe with landscaping, "incidental storage outdoors shall be shielded from any street or adjacent residential zone by set fencing, landscaping, or other appropriate measure," period. And I appreciate it. I just heard him say he agrees. So, but, but I just wanna, my role, I perceive, is to make sure that today is the first day, right? So you can take, respectfully, if the board so chooses, you can take the applicant at his word, that he wants to move forward. He wants to have a beautiful uh, project. But the project, as it's, as it's articulated, and should the board approve, memorialized, has to, has to relate to basic facts and circumstances that are provided by the, from the governing body to the planning board. So that the idea, for instance, I, I mean, I, you know, as a citizen, I can certainly appreciate the fact that the a, a business that requires lumber got a good price and wants to take advantage of that price and store it, but the ordinance says X. Now, there is a little opportunity to define what incidental is. But it's clear in that, in my opinion, it is clear, given the fact that the lead sentence in that paragraph is that there's supposed to be no outdoor storage, that it has to be limited. And if, in fact, in the business model, that that lumber person, not to pick on that person, but to articulate the point, if the lumber person wants to take, be in a position to take advantage of the market and have huge stor- and I'm, I'm, I'm not busting on him. I'm, so, listen to the concept I'm trying to say. Wants to take advantage of economic, um, realities by way of example. The board, and therefore the, what he, what that person rents, they're governed by only being able to do incidental storage. He's gonna have to store it up somewhere else for, for a long period of time. It's just a fact.
Okay. The outdoor storage, we haven't, uh, gentlemen, the outdoor storage, um, to my recollection, we have not permitted in any other application that we've seen in the years that I've been there, and certainly not in this one. So with that being said, you know, do we want to move forward with this application? Or do we want to hold off on this sticking point? Look, if we haven't ran XL Wood, we just won't even hear it.
You have to use it. I apologize. Yes, to use it, Mike. Everyone has to. I'm sorry about that.
We had indoor storage and outdoor storage, cuz certain lumber can be outside and certain can be inside.
Mister, uh, Mister Chairman, if I, if I could, um, just to add, add a thought to your comment, your, your latest comment about this outdoor or incidental storage um, and outdoor storage in, um, related to other, other applications. This incidental storage language is unique just to this particular zone. Okay, that is not, that is not, um, across the board to every zone in the municipality. That, that comes out of the, the PM one zone, two forty-four dash ninety-seven, the PM one, Pine Lands Manufacturing Zone, uh, section E, other provisions and requirements, and then sub-paragraph six. And again, the, the language we've been having, or discussion we've been having, in "All industrial activities or processes shall take place within a completely enclosed building. Incidental storage outdoors shall be shielded from street," you know, which Mr. Gertner was just, uh, just referring to. So this discussion that we're having Agreed. Agreed. And Mr. Gertner started this discussion with that, and I, I mean, it certainly, you know, my interpretation, without looking at the the verbatim of a dictionary, I would say it's, it's directly associated with a proposed use. So again, the stair guy has lumber. The stair guy can't be storing products that, or materials that are not used in that particular, that particular business. So a tenant may, may be able to store something directly associated, actively used in connection with their, with their business. I also, I would also offer that, I think, building on maybe what Mr. Gertner was trying to get at, um, maybe the, the amount of that space should be limited. Let's just say if I have a thousand square foot indoor space, maybe they only get ten percent or fifteen percent of this quote-unquote incidental storage. So the lumber guy can't buy lumber that he's gonna use for the next three years. Maybe it's lumber he's gonna use for some reasonable time period, sixty days, ninety days, something along those lines. Maybe that would help the board get a comfort level to make sure that the, this outdoor storage is not gonna take over the use of any particular tenant, or is not gonna, you know, uh, take over the activity on the site. Because I think the use, the word incidental, we all, we all, I think we would all agree, would mean a small portion. Whatever that portion would, would be, I think, we maybe can define.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate. This building's been around as long as I can remember, and apparently it was a chicken coop before, I remember. But it predates Pine Lands, and it was used as such. So the Pine Lands can come in and change the way the building's used, with ever, without it ever stopping being used? That building's been in continual use since before Pine Lands. Do we have to account for that? It never stopped being used.
My, my first concern is that, um, Pine Lands designating it as something subject to them having a valid CO for what occurred on site, would make them what planners refer to as pre-existing non-conforming. This, unfortunately, for the applicant, is an expansion, that pre-existing non-conforming application. So unfortunately, you can't approve the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming condition here at the planning board. But I would agree that, yes, and I, I think what, the word I would use is they, don't they have some vested rights? From when they got started up until, you know, assuming everything is proper, until they came here? The answer to that question is probably yes. But unfortunately, from a planning and zoning perspective, if someone else placed regulations that would make it non-conforming, now it would be considered pre-existing non-conforming. I'm not sure they're gonna make that argument this evening here.
Thank you.
Sub, subject to Mr. Gertner getting out of his chair and whacking me with a two-by-four, I would think that that's a reasonable accommodation by the board, given this application. One of the, and I apologize, one of the concerns we still have, though, is I still have to have something in the resolution of approval that code enforcement and zoning can look at. It says, and the only one that ever comes to my head is the contractor warehouse buildings. When you run out of parking, you can't lease a unit anymore because you leased a unit to something that required more parking. Here, if they get to a point, the existing, pre-existing outdoor storage, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, you have to be able to explain to the town what you're gonna do so that we can enforce it if someone calls and registers a concern. So I, I think in the, you know, perhaps your terms, in the spirit of cooperation, maybe we could say, you know what? Well, you gotta give a pass to the things that are there and appear to be legal. Let's see what we can do with the site in the back, and make sure that we either legitimize or make sure the proper approvals are in place for the things that are out there in two thousand twenty-one, because I'm not sure we know that yet.
I, I think, all right, are, are you, you saying that that area is okay for the existing building? Is that my understanding?
I said that. I answered a question of the board member regarding the site in the back.
All right.
I, I, I think, I think you still have legal issues regarding what you're gonna call the area that's up front. The area that's up front exists and utilizes the entire site. Now, you wanna add something to that entire site. So the existing condition, quite frankly, is exacerbated by that.
So it looks like in the concept, we all agree that this is good for this project. Being called incidental, sort of incidental outdoors. So, um, is everybody in agreement with that? Yes? So, you know, I'm looking here at incidental, and, you know, synonyms for, uh, for incidental are accidental, casual, uh, inadvertent, uh, unintended, unintentional, unplanned, unpremeditated, unwitting. So it seems like, you know, this is incidental, and it's like, oh, but for temporary, not, not, you know, all the time. And my, and he's shaking his head. Yes.
Well, I, I, you may be right. My experience, and I defer to Mr. Gertner, who has probably more experience than I do, but my experience is that the common usage of certain of words such as incidental do tend to take on a different meaning when you're using them in the context of zoning and planning issues. And so if you were to go to a standard dictionary, which I don't have in front of me right now, of zoning terms, and look up the word incidental, it could have a different meaning than some of the common meanings which you have. I mean, it's
Possible, but for the purposes of this meeting and to move on on this sticking point,
Right.
you know, I wanna come to some sense of agreement on what incidental means in this instance.
I agree. And, and I think we're all trying to do that on behalf of the applicant. Um, the applicant wants to be able to provide storage for the project, including the existing building and buildings to be built, all in accordance with the requirements of your statute and with the requirements of the ordinance. So I agree with you. We need to, A, define and make sure we delineate the, uh, storage area, but then come up with a, an agreed... You disagree with that?
So I disagree with that, the way, and way which it came across, because I think the applicant should, based on the ordinance at least, now, if you wanna ask for a, uh, the zoning, you know, the zoning board to grant a variance for this, that's a different story. But the applicant at best can provide an area for incidental and not accessory storage, period.
I agree.
Emerging.
I agree.
Emerging storage, but it shouldn't be, all right, so I, I took the comment as the lead i- as storage, and that can't be
No, no.
Okay, I apologize.
And Mister Peters, do you, um, I'd like you to weigh in on this.
Trying to define incidental when it's not defined in the Jackson Township Land Use Ordinance, most land use attorneys tell us you go to a next higher source. So when you go to, um, land use, well, that's, that's, that's the one at the top, right next to the Supreme Court.
Guy by the name of Markowitz, right? What's his name?
Moskowitz. Has land use definitions in New Jersey, so.
Right.
Nice three-hundred-page document, which I don't have with me this evening. Um, and I think perhaps a, a little bit of a homework assignment between parties is in order. To try to get an understanding of what, and, and listen, we, we can all agree to disagree, but I, I even though we had it in our report twice, we didn't talk about it until ten to eight tonight. So quite frankly, they may not have been ready to have that in-depth, detailed discussion about it. So I think we should give them an opportunity to go back, come up with their best debate point or argument for us, um, and perhaps some, some way of reconciling that word with what they're proposing to us, and then perhaps in a, in a quick turnaround, get them back here and try to hammer this out so that we can get a ratable bill here.
Okay, so, so just a quick review. Everybody's on with the overall concept. The only problem that we have is this outdoor storage, is it, is the location of this incidental outdoor storage, is that okay with regards to setbacks for, um, the wetlands?
It's buried. There you go.
Just in the wetland area?
No, I'm asking you if the, the proposed incidental storage on these plans, if it abides by all of the appropriate setbacks for whatever delineation there is, whether it's wetlands, or it's Pine Lands, I don't know.
There's building setbacks. That's, that's defined, but there's not really a setback, um, for, um, incidental storage. If it was bulk storage, um, yeah, there is setback, there is limitations as far as setbacks, property lines, buffering, height, um, all those issues, but, but not
Are they look, are they delineated on the plans in wetlands right now, any portion of them?
I'm, I'm seeing, um, storage in a wetland bucket.
Okay, we can't have that. Okay, we can't have storage in the wetland. No, right?
I believe that's up to the Pine Lands in this particular case, and that, that's existing disturbance. If you look at, um, Anthony, maybe you can pull up the aerial.
Okay, you need, you need to, to show me that the one
Well, we already have a certificate of filing. That's why we're before this board. Okay, so we're allowed to come before this board with, with, with the application. And then, again, after this board's approval, we go back to the Pine Lands and see if the Pine Lands has any other further comments. We can't, we're, we're, we don't have to go back to the Pine Lands in this interim condition now. We already satisfied our obligation to go get a certificate of filing from the Pine Lands.
You're, you're telling me that the Pine Lands, uh, we have to go first before these Pine Lands?
I'm telling that we've already satisfied our obligation by obtaining a certificate of filing. Now we've made an application to the planning board, and the planning board is, you know, bound to give us, uh, some direction.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That, that's the correct procedure for Pine Lands as an outside agency approval. Municipalities will order first decision. I think you can certainly verify that what's out there was permitted. The idea that, you know, we don't know that Pine Lands approved this previously. That's either on Pine Lands substantive or the applicant when he comes back here.
So
Mister Chairman?
How do we go from here? This is like a Mexican stand.
Well, Mister Chairman Manica's suggestion, I, I think it may help the applicant and the board. The applicant has yet to put on its testimony regarding buffering, the, the required variances and waivers. That'll, that may help bring things, you know, to a point where, um, the board is, if, it may hear other concerns and what have you, and if they're gonna come back again to, in an attempt to hammer out, for lack of a better term, this, what incidental storage is, and perhaps respectfully, some of these, uh, definitional arguments regarding, um, what was disturbed, what wasn't, what was used, what wasn't, what Pine Lands approved and what wasn't, so that there's a clear, at least, understanding of what's agreed upon amongst the professionals, what's disagreed amongst the professionals, and then, so the board can have laid upon the table, so to speak, what is before it, so that it
speak, what is before it, so that it can succinctly vote. That's a long version. The short version is, obviously, it's the chair and the board's ascension. I would suggest that they at least continue their testimony regarding the variances and waivers, so that you have a full package.
So we'll just continue then. If we could refer to, I believe this is A1 is the aerial. Anthony, maybe you can zoom in a little bit for me, like, right in the center where I have the pointer, and we'll just have one more little discussion about incidental storage and then move on to some of the other issues. Zoom in a touch more if you can. So it's a little difficult to see at this scale, but the incidental storage that we've been referring to, it's kind of in this area of the site. Now, that already exists at this time. That area is already gravelled and fenced around it, and that's the area that encroaches into the, into the wetland buffer slightly. So just so we understand, we're not proposing to enlarge or increase that. That's already been actively utilized for quite some time, and that information was presented to the pine lands when the plans were submitted for the certificate of filing. So there's no expansion proposed into the wetland buffer. It's possible that this activity existed prior to, you know, the pine lands CMP being adopted and it's grandfathered in. That I'm not certain of, but that'll certainly be flushed out when we go back to the pine lands for a letter of no call-up, you know, hopefully following the local planning board approval. And if we could maybe move on to some of the other, some of the other items, just to get some information on the record. The application does include a handful of variances. Most of them, I think, we already had testimony on at the prior meeting by Mr. Borden. Of course, we have a variance for the front yard setback for building number one, which is, you know, the smaller building up front. That's now proposed at 66.3. It was previously, I think, was 47 feet and change was originally proposed, but that's been increased to 66.3 feet. And again, we're increasing that buffer along the front yard. We are restricted by the unique shape of the property and by the wetlands and topography, and that's the reason why that variance is being requested. All of the variances that we are seeking, of course, are related to satisfaction of the goals and objectives of the master plan that allow for redevelopment of the site and allow for a new tax ratable and a new business in the, or new businesses in the town, create jobs and are good for the economy. So all of those standards satisfy the goals and objectives of the master plan. As to the buffer screening strip that's required along the frontage of the site, 100 feet is required. It's a variable width proposed. At its narrowest, it's going to be about 32 feet. Anthony, maybe go back to A8, the site plan. There you go. At its narrowest down here, where the parking area is for building number one, I believe we have about 32 feet in this particular area, and it gets wider as we get closer to the existing building, where it is, I think it's a minimum of about 40 feet to the parking area in front of the existing building. There are signage proposed for all of the buildings. We believe it's appropriate to have individual tenant sign for each tenant. Your ordinance does limit the number of signs proposed on a building, so that would require relief, I believe, for all three of the buildings. We would not exceed the area requirements. Buildings with these types of presentations, the areas, area requirement is quite generous, but we would like to have a, I believe it's appropriate to have an individual sign for each tenant, so that does require a variance by your ordinance. And then we also have a couple of design waivers, one related to curbing throughout the site. We are proposing a waiver from that. We don't believe it's necessary to have curbing around the entire perimeter of the pavement in uses such as this. I believe it's an unnecessary expense. We can still manage and collect the stormwater as proposed with the system of inlets and piping, and don't believe that curbing provides any real benefit internal to the project on an application like this. We do have curbing up at the front of the site around this building number one, which is a little, you know, a little more pedestrian oriented, I'll say, based upon its size and arrangement, but for the warehouse buildings, I don't believe there's any real detriment to granting a waiver from providing curbing. You also have some design standards that relate to main access drive aisles and location of parking spaces. And again, the site is restricted by location of the existing development on site, restricted by its shape, and restricted by its topography and wetlands. And because of those conditions, we're seeking a design waiver of that particular length requirement. Also, so that the board understands, when the application was originally presented last month, we did not have sidewalk proposed along the front of the site. We now are proposing the sidewalk along the front of the site in conjunction with the landscaping that will be proposed to provide the buffering.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. Will site, you're proposing or not proposing?
We are proposing sidewalk along White's Row. Yes.
Thank you, sorry.
Mr. Peters also commented on the number and types of refuse enclosures, and after I had a chance to look at this plan, I believe that we will need some more refuse containers than are currently shown on the plan. We are proposing landscaping buffering around one refused enclosure here, located close proximity to building number one. For the other enclosures, which are located further into the site and certainly not in view of the main access drive, we're asking for a waiver from the buffering requirements, as I don't believe that really provides any enhancement to the project. I don't believe it's necessary. We'll agree to develop a plan for the number of enclosures with the board's professional staff. I think that covers all of the variances and waivers unless there's any more specific questions. And again, just an overview to summarize, you know, the application is for, you know, one new building, two new buildings, and then, you know, we call it, you know, partial demo rebuild of the existing building, hopefully to, you know, to beautify the whole entire frontage, make it a significant improvement over what's there today. An application that when it's built out will probably create, you know, close to 150 jobs in the municipality and certainly satisfies the goals and objectives of the master plan and consistent with what this board, in my opinion, should be looking to have approved.
The dimensions on building one, I mean, you've done, you picked up about 20 foot of setback, but you're still a third off with the requirements on a five-series county road. It's going to get widened sooner or later. Building one. You were at 46 feet, now you're at 66 feet, but you're still a full third off of where you're supposed to be.
Right.
The reason for that is that that building is located along the curve of White's Row Road. We're restricted by wetlands in the back. We are providing buffering along the front, and we're asking for that variance. Our opinion is that developing the site with a building of this size and presentation does not create any detriment to the municipality. I believe it's a benefit. It satisfies the goals and objectives of the master plan by allowing the site to be developed with these two new buildings and the, you know, rebuilding of part of the existing building.
And what happens when they widen the road?
That's already anticipated. We do have to provide right-of-way dedication to the county, so this dimension is to the right-of-way. So that's already taken into account in this plan.
So you're 66 feet from the right-of-way, not from the edge of the property?
We are 66 feet from the proposed right-of-way.
Thank you.
At this time, I have to technically open it up for public comment, so if it's time, anybody who's interested about this application, please come up to the microphone.
Well, I think there are a series of homework assignments, so to speak, to attempt to present to the board some clarity as to places that, again, as I indicated, where the professionals may agree, where we can also better articulate potentially where we disagree, if that is in fact the case, so that the board can be clear on exactly over what it's deliberating when it wishes to, you know, ultimately determine whether to approve this application and if it approves, you know, what conditions it would approve. Obviously, it's primarily the question of this incidental storage, some other cleanup items, perhaps particularly with regard to what exactly pine lands saw with the certificate of filing. I think that would be helpful to be clarified, because we heard an argument from the applicant, as I heard it anyway, that it's sort of existing and pine lands saw it, so it should be okay. I know that's a 30,000-foot description of that. That's not quite what they said, but I think that would be an item of clarification, too, because it all fits in to some extent, both as to parking, storage globally, and then what exactly is this incidental storage?
What about jurisdiction?
I think the applicant needs to present some information either before the meeting or at the next hearing that we can review and give the board a better answer on. I think if we left it without giving them the opportunity to respond to the comments that have been in the reports, it might not, I want to use the word fair, it might not be the most prudent way of doing it. You've indicated what we think is a concern. We'd like to hear back from them. We had sort of a discussion, a debate about it this evening. I suspect both attorneys would like to see something in writing so we can make it part of the record, make that determination, and perhaps that's point one when we meet again.
I just want to make sure, Ernie, I understand what information in particular, so that we can address it properly.
The issue of incidental storage out of doors. The statement of operations relating to the existing and proposed tenants. One that was submitted is extremely generic. Then I would think that the outdoor storage area would need to be better, well, that's not a jurisdictional issue. So those two items would be your jurisdictional issues.
So you're, I just want to make sure I'm clear. As to a statement of operations, you want something definitive as to each tenant, as to their business and what material or what aspect of their business would be included in potential incidental storage? That's...
Not only that, it would be a statement of operation.
Well, this, and I understand, it's a good point. That works, that information works for existing tenants in the existing building. I can't provide a statement of operations for any potential future tenants.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I actually have a copy of the statement of operation, and it refers to the existing building as a contractor's office and shop, which is referred to in the permitted use section as an office. And there's one that talks about warehouse, there's one that talks about maintenance repair, there's one that talks about vehicle repairs. We need to have some verification of that. Because we have a landscape contractor, so put it on the line. Which one of those, the landscape contractor fall under? And B, building two is proposed as the warehouse. I want to make sure you guys don't paint yourself in a corner. I thought I heard your client get up and say that he was hoping to put the landscape contractor in the back building. This says you're building a warehouse. This is you guys putting enough rope to hang yourself with. This isn't the board. This is what you guys submitted for us to review. So yes, while I don't think the board may be able to ask you what each individual tenant is, I think for the purposes of use and jurisdiction, we have to make sure that your client understands what this statement of operation that was prepared does for you.
Okay, understood.
So in one of those lines, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McFarland is probably aware, words may not be. So to the chairman's point, we have set up tech meetings before, basically, so once you get these items together, I'm sure all three of us would be available to participate in kind of, you know, going through the statement of operations and some of these questions to reach a determination or to not reach it, but at least to know where everyone stands so that the board ultimately can make a proper determination as to the question of incidental, whether or not we're accepted, whether this board is accepting a statement of operations that meets the definition of what incidental is, or if there's a need to interpret exactly what incidental means, understanding that only the zoning board, the Board of Adjustment, has the power to do that.
We understand that. A month, probably. Yeah, I would think so, to be realistic.
We may well have a third application, but, you know, quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, this this is going to be, it, it appears this should be a very narrow
Right.
scope of initial discussion, so. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm presuming this is correct. This matter before the, the board, White'sville Business Park, Block 22301, lots 5, 6, and 16, shall be carried to the November 1st, 2021, meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board without the requirement of further notice. The applicant has waived time to that date.
All right. So, anyone care to make the motion? Hi, okay. November 1st is. Okay. I get a question. Meeting adjourned.